Regular meeting of the Chairhold City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, September 5th, 2024. First item on our agenda tonight is a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilwoman Amanda Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amanda. Michelle, can I have the calling of the roll, please?
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Bowland.
Present.
Councilperson Chalas.
I am here.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you, Michelle. This time, we'll allow 30 minutes of public comments for items that are not on the agenda. We ask you to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. That's on non-agenda items. Uh, we've got a sign-up list. First on the list is Shannon Giles.
Giles, nobody ever gets it right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shannon.
Hi, long time no see. Um, hi, my name is Shannon Giles. Um, I live at 8207 Wabash, but I am here representing Chances and Services for Youth and Tobacco-Free Vigo. I am required by Casey Law to announce that tomorrow is Music at the Crossroads. That's not why I'm here, but remember Neil McCoy. I don't know what time it starts, I'm there all day. Um, and then next weekend, on Friday and Saturday, from 5:00 to 10:00, is the Balloon Festival at Fairbanks Park. I've done my job. Okay, so, my point incoming here today is, back in February, March, and April, I and some lovely volunteers conducted what we call the Point-of-sale Survey. We surveyed 106 retailers in Vigo County. That was 16 more than last year, last, well, last survey, which is done every two years. Um, and by far, not all the tobacco retailers in Vigo County. Just a representative sample. We have gotten the data back, and I'm going to give you some teaser highlights of what we have found. We increased the percentage of retailers within 1,000 feet of a school by 5%. We increased retailers within 500 feet of another retailer by 7%. And the licensed retailers over the last two years increased by 33. I encourage you to search your brain for any other business sector in Vigo County that would have added 33 new businesses in the last two years. I doubt you'll come up with one. Why is this information important? Point-of-sale marketing has been defined as a problem with trying to deal with tobacco prevention and cessation for three very important reasons. It encourages youth to start using tobacco. Most kids will hit a convenience store at some point during the week. High schoolers love convenience stores. They love to be in there, you know, messing around and doing stuff. But what we find is that tobacco products, vape products, are placed conveniently next to the candy, or the ice cream, or the toys. That's not an accident, it's very intentional. Tobacco retailers have to continue a pipeline of customers, and most people start smoking under 18, 99% under 26. If they haven't started by then, they're not going to, which means that point-of-sale marketing, attracting those young people, is critical to tobacco retailer's success. 85% of the money that tobacco retailers spend on marketing, they spend on point-of-sale. The second reason is it makes quitting more difficult. If you drive down Wabash and you go past Little Caesar's, and then you go past Domino's, and then you go past, I may be getting them in the wrong order, Papa John's, there's a good chance you're gonna want pizza. Tobacco retailers do the same thing. If you drive by and you see all those wavy vape signs and you're trying to quit, they make it really hard because it's in your face all the time. And the third reason is it disproportionately targets some communities. The other two things we looked at in this point-of-sale survey this year was availability of fresh food in the places that we service and alcohol. One of the things, and that data's not quite available yet, um, they're still crunching all the numbers, we had 46 counties that participated in this, so it takes a little minute to do it all, but, um, we are looking for food deserts. We're looking for places where you can't get real food, but you can get alcohol, and you can get tobacco, and most of that happens in marginalized communities, lower income. There are five times more tobacco retailers in low and middle income, low and lower-middle income communities than in medium and high-income communities. So, again, not by accident. To give you an example, we have, we, today, we gave out to all the middle and high schools vape disposal kits. We are working at trying to get vapes out of the landfill. And we asked them, "Once you get, there's a fill line on the bucket, once you get to the fill line, call me, I'll come get them." Chairhold North called me at noon. Their bucket was, they already had enough to fill their bucket from what they've gotten since school started. In fact, more than. So I'm going to go by there at noon tomorrow, they've asked for two more buckets. So while, yes, overall, the vaping rate has gone down with youth, it is still an issue. It is still a big issue. Our actual, I just saw our new county data, and our smoking rate is actually trending up. It's not a black and white from year to year because they overlap the years, but, um, we've got some issues and we've got some things to solve. I'm not going to give you the rest of the point-of-sale data because in, well, after Dance with Chairhold Stars, because quite honestly, Casey can't do anything until after October 4th, but sometime in the middle of October, we're going to have some community conversations where we're going to share out all of this data, and you all will be cordially invited, and I hope you join me, um, because there's some really important conversations that we need to have. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, Donald Hyde.
Yes, my name is Donald Hyde, and, uh, today I'm feeling a little better than I've been lately, but I'm not quite there yet. However, uh, today I want to speak on a topic that concerns, and the only people that can actually truly do something about it is the City Council. I've already spoken about this once, I didn't want to speak about it, but I'm going to speak about it again. The homeless rate is big. Now, I talked to a few friends of mine who were in the knowledge of it, and they said there is one difference this year than go back 20 years ago, when the last time it was big in Chairhold. And that is, there are more women homeless than men. I couldn't believe that, but he showed me the facts, and he told me, "I'm around him all the time, I know what I'm talking about." So I believe him. Well, with that in my mind, we have a problem, well, actually, we, we meaning the City of Chairhold has a problem, and mainly, you have a problem. We are now in the beginning of fall. Fall lasts three months, then winter's here. Now, if this problem is as big as I think it is, and if it's not going to go away anytime soon, and you do nothing about it, sometime in January or early February, the police are going to go somewhere and they're going to find people froze to death. That's going to be on you. It really will be. Again, I don't have to answer for this one, no, no, that'd be you, for not doing anything about it. Now, I've heard of a program that's working pretty good, and a city could get behind it, and use it to find out and identify how many truly homeless people there are, especially the girls, the women. And that is, uh, where they're giving out these tents, so they can put the tent up, and the rain could be on them, and the sun could be off of them, and they can sleep there safely, they put it somewhere safe. Now, I might add, this City Council has knowledge and ability, that they could take that, and they can make all the places the tents are put in safe, if you wanted to, but it's up to you to do that. Now, with the tents, I would prefer, uh, that the people giving away these tents would require the people to actually show them putting them up. I say this because I'm an Eagle Scout. I was in scouting for 15 years. I taught so many people how to put up tents, I don't even want to remember it. But the bottom line is, if they really want to put those tents up like you want them to, you're giving them, give them a tent, it's going to keep the sun off them, and in the wintertime, it's going to rain off of them, and it will help them, in the wintertime, keep warm, if they're going to be homeless at that time period. And like I said, you're running out of time. They gotta know how to put up the tent. You guys could get some people together and show them how to put that tent up, get their name, and how they ended up homeless. And by the way, when I say homeless, I'm not saying any laws were broken off, no. What got the people in trouble in 19 and 2008 is what's got everybody in trouble in 2024. The economy, inflation. Inflation raised, and I never thought about this, I really didn't, and maybe you didn't either. We all thought about the price of food going up, I sure did. Oh, my God, that's my top issue. When I vote this year, inflation will be number one. Those politicians better give me a good answer on that, or I won't be voting for them, Democrat, Republican, or Independent, don't care. Inflation was, is, the number-one problem in America, and nobody has solved it yet. Now, with that said, I was only thinking of food. I didn't think of until just recently, when my friend told me, "Well, one of the problems with inflation is the price of renting a house has went up." The price of renting a house has went up. So they could be living in a house, paying their bills, they've got a fixed income or a semi-fixed income, and all of a sudden, the price of rent goes up $200, $300, past their ability to pay it. That's how you end up with a lot of homeless people.
Mr. Hyde, can you wrap up, please?
No. That's how you end up with a lot of homeless people. Now, I don't know what all the answers are, but I do know this, this City Council can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Next on the list, Jonathan Deng.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Deng, I live on 1929 North 11th Street. I'm gonna paint you guys a picture, right? I joined the military in 2013, uh, it's been about 11 years, complete my military service in April, 12 years. I went to Iraq last year, uh, came back in August. Since in between, I bought a house here, 2020. Couple of months later, my neighbors bought a house. Now, you're probably wondering where I'm going with this. They're fine, until you see four grown pit bulls chewing on your fence. One male, three female. Talked to a dude, he was raising the pit bulls to be a backup rear. I tried to talk to my neighbors, 1933, Morgan Butler and Dakota Gillan. Some of the law enforcement know personally Dakota Gillan, uh, not a good reputation. I called coenforcement multiple times about my issue, and said, "We can't do anything," um, "because their dog is on their property, and your family's on your property, can't do anything, this is a civil matter." I was like, "Okay." And then I get a phone call from my wife, saying, "One of their friends just got ripped by one of their pit bulls, it has to be lifeline to Indy." That dog was hidden from coenforcement, and coenforcement has to harass Dakota to get them to help them to hunt down this dog and put it down. And then I tried negotiating, it was like, "Hey, here's the estimation for the fence." Uh, we agreed six-foot tall fence in December. Mind you, I was gearing up for this deployment of 2022 to 2023. Didn't hear anything, called coenforcement, tried to negotiate. I actually met the actual house owner, Morgan Butler, and, uh, she screamed at me, saying, "I refuse to put 50/50, even though her dog's the one that chewed on my fence." And then I get a call when I'm in Evansville for my military duty, from my wife, saying she just got bit by one of those dogs, because we have two dogs of our own, we try to get them away from the fence so they don't interact with those pit bulls. Eventually, that failed. Resulted in the injury of my wife and one of my dogs. Since then, I came back from deployment, I told my wife, "You're not allowed to be outside by herself." My brother-in-law, uh, moved in, and our number-one rule is, we will go outside with a machete or a knife. And then after, soon after, uh, August of my deployment, I've initiated a civil lawsuit. Couple of weeks later, I got ambushed two feet out of my door, trying to take out my dogs by their dogs. I slashed at their dogs three times, they didn't flinch. They went back to their property, um, when their owner actually opened the door. So that tells you that these dogs are more afraid of their owner than anyone else. And then I bought a handgun, 9mm pistol, and a couple of weeks later, October 31st, I went out, because my dogs need to go out, and then their dog was let out, and went through my fence, I shot it three times. It went back on the third shot. 911 was called, they came by, and because of a similar case, they arrested me, all because of a lady shot down out of the way blindly, hit in multiple vehicles. I've only damaged my fence. I injured no one, but because of that situation, I was arrested. And here is a court order of my release 18 hours later. "To be told you were wrongfully arrested is a bit traumatizing, especially for a guy who served in the military, went for deployment, to be screamed at to begin to ditch because a tactical ballistic missile was aimed at you." It was a bit traumatizing, so I, I believe, I'm a firm believer that at least I deserve to at least have my family safe. It was not granted to me on October 31st, 2023. And then, recently, Morgan Butler was sued by her business, or her, um, Great Clips, where she works at. She, uh, said that she served in the military, Exhibit A proved that she did not. Dakota Gillan strangled her while she was pregnant for a 16-year-old, he pleaded guilty. And, uh, I'm gonna read you these charges, real quick. Battery with bodily injury, pregnant woman dismissed. Strangulation, victim is pregnant, dismissed. Domestic battery committed, and the presence of a child less than 16-year-old, dismissed. Domestic battery, plead guilty, fines a dollar. Was supposed to be in jail for a year, suspended. Uh, coenforcement came through his house, um, trying to get rid of those dogs. After I was arrested, they started issuing citations to the dude. Uh, six tickets. He didn't show up for his court date. Dismissed, 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 dismissed. He hasn't paid a single fine. Not a single citation was issued to the actual house owner. So I have decided to buckle down, embrace the suck, instead of paying a mortgage of $500, I have now purchased a property in Clinton to get my family to safety for $1,200. Why? Why has a judge says, "Okay, guy who, who, one, was arrested in Hendricks County for dealing marijuana, has been let go, was supposed to be in jail for 365, suspended, and then a second time for his strangulation, and now, his dog just recently killed a cat in 12 points." That court date is pending in five days from now. So, yes, we do have a problem in Chairhold. We need to start taking care of this in Chairhold, don't you think? Especially for a person that was wrongfully arrested. I have multiple degrees underneath my belt, I've received multiple awards overseas. Please tell me, how do I make sense of this? Because I no longer want to serve in the military, because no one has my back, my family. When I'm backed in the corner, just be told you were wrongfully arrested, my instinct says sue the police department, sue coenforcement. But the Lord has told me, it's not the answer. The answer is to move away. While these two people are going to cause harm to Chairhold. And he told, Dakota Gillan has told coenforcement that he's going to stop breeding, while, just the other day, when the dog knocked a pan off my fence, uh, you can see the evidence that, of breeding. Show me how, how this all makes sense. A guy who faithfully served for almost 12 years, keep his, his head down low, is now in the corporate union, while this non-law Biden citizen is let free to do whatever he wanted. That's all I have.
Mr. Deng?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're all kind of at a loss for words right now. You've shared an awful lot with us in a short amount of time. First of all, I know I speak for the entire council to say, we absolutely thank you for your service. More than you know, that's important, I know, to each and every member of this council. I don't have an answer for your question. I mean, I truly don't. We don't have any control over the courts. Uh, we can reach out to code enforcement, we can deal with things through ordinances. But just, I'll allow the other council to speak, we typically don't respond during public comments, if anyone chooses to, but I want you to know that you were heard tonight.
Thank you.
And right now, at this very moment, that is really, um, the best that I can give you.
Thank you. It's, uh, it's been a traumatic four years.
I, I, I got that. I heard you loud and clear on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak under public comments? This time, we'll close public comments. Michelle.
Uh, there's no corrections.
Corrections to the journal.
There are none.
Communications from the mayor? No communications from the mayor. Uh, reports from city officials?
Uh, there are none at this time.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
General Ordinance 12-24, Amendment to Article 22, Special Event Permit, Section 4-310, Section 4-314, Section 4-317, and Section 4-319. You will propose amendment before you. As a reminder, you do not need to vote to take action.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Councilwoman Bowland, and members of the Chairhold City Council. Uh, you have before you today, um, Article 22 under General Ordinance 12-2024, known as the Special Event Permit. After a long month of deliberations and conversations with, uh, some faculty members from the university as well as some alumni, we have renewed some of the amendments. Um, do you all have a copy of the up-to-date Word document in front of you? Yes, all right, I'll take that then and move forward. So the first is under Section 4-311, activities exempted from the article. You'll see there that that number has changed from 50 to 15 members. That is a big change. Again, to reiterate, these are activities exempted from this article. Under that, you see a special event with some definitions of, you know, university clubs, university events, and nonprofits as well. Moving on to, uh, page two, you will see how we wrote, um, under applicant, application for the permit, that is Section 4-312, um, submitted by the applicant in person. So this requires that group or person applying for the application to come in. Underneath that, you will also see owners of the premises where the special event will be held, and identification of the applicants holding the event. The insurance language has, of course, been updated, it had been previously discussed and agreed upon. Uh, a big change is on, uh, I call it page four, it's not listed as page four, but it's under Section 4-314. It's the number seven, which is above transfer of permit. And you'll see there that we wrote that the applicant has committed a violation of this article during a previous event, which applicant was involved or committed an offense in another jurisdiction, which has similar special permit slash special event slash dance party ordinances. And I'll touch on that one in one second. Uh, we did, of course, change the October dates to, to be the month of October, and the applicant fee for that, uh, period of October being $250, sorry, four-week period. I've got, uh, Dave Thompson with me here, who is a detective with the Chairhold Police Department, as well as a member of the County Council. Several weeks ago, we received a, a pretty chilling phone call from the Indianapolis Police Department. An individual through social media was advertising pajama party. Yeah, and I don't know what you guys wear to bed, but this was a pajama-themed party at a parcel outside of city limits, where essentially, they do a flash sale, and 48 to 72 hours before the event, they post a location and details of how to pay and attend that event. This promoter and this individual had three events in Indianapolis that led to not one, not two, but three shootings, two of which underage individuals were involved with those shootings. So when we bring this ordinance in front of you, I'm going to be abundantly clear on it, saying, "Hey, this is not to stop college, university groups, or organizations, or fundraising for a nonprofit, or alumni getting together at a bar, which you can do with any given weekend, right? This is not to do that, those are not the groups that we are looking at." We are targeting groups who have one, created issues in other communities, or two, have historically created issues in our communities. Because a 300 to 400-person event, or even 100 or even 50-person event, which shots fired, is an unfortunate scenario that, while our officers train, train, and train on, ultimately creates a situation that you do not want to see in your community. Uh, so, that is a, a recent event, and luckily, it did not happen. Honestly, there was some really good coordination and work between the Indianapolis Police Department and the City of Chairhold, and I commend our officers for being as involved. They were working with different agencies, uh, and I'm happy that we likely avoided an incident, and I say likely because three of this person's last events led to shootings. Uh, and that is, again, to reiterate the importance of General Ordinance 12 of, of 2024. Uh, so with that, uh, Michael, of course, helped prepare the ordinance, we got great feedback from the council, we did alter some things, and Dave Thompson, who introduced the ordinance, is here with me today, so we will, uh, take any questions you have, or if you're prepared to vote, look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on General Ordinance 12-2024?
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street. From what I get from it, I'm assuming, I'm guessing right, that this is some sort of a party thing. If you want to have a party at ISU, uh, you've got to obey the rules. One rule I didn't hear, and I don't understand why not, and, uh, the Republican part of me, not the liberal part of me, wants an answer to this. Why did they not ban guns, period? If you attend the party, you don't have a gun on you at all, and everybody searched at the party to make sure that's true. Give me that answer. Why is that not there?
I will not be answering questions with regards to the federal policies of the Second Amendment. As a responsible gun owner, I do believe in responsible gun ownership, but at the local level, we do not have, uh, the means nor the legal power to have that conversation nor enact said ordinance this evening.
I disagree.
Anyone else wish to comment, public comments? Okay, I close public comments and open the council discussion. Councilman Azar?
I'm looking at, uh, Section 4-311(c).
4-311(c), yep.
Yeah, so would that, basically, if I'm reading it correctly, would that take into account the brick-and-mortar businesses that are already on Wabash?
Yeah, yes.
For example, I want to give you a couple of examples, because I got a call that, in the past, they have been...
because I've got a call that in the past, they have been threatened to be shut down, et cetera. Would that affect anything like the terminal sets up a tent on their parking lot? The Sauna sets up a tent on the street because they don't want people in their business at that particular date? They have all the approval by state excise. So are they exempt from this at that point?
If they are conducting the event on their permit premises, they are exempt.
All right, would, if someone asks to have the street closed?
That becomes part of their permitted premises.
They're just extending their permit.
That's right. That's what excise does. They dictate the rule, I mean, currently dictate the rules under which you can have alcohol outside of a licensed establishment. And if they are operating with a permit from excise, under their liquor license, they are exempt under this ordinance.
Thank you. I've always felt like a special event, and I'm going to use homecoming as the example, is someone coming from Illinois, setting up a tent for the one day, and then leaving town. To me, that's a special event. What I'm talking about is an extension of their brick-and-mortar business for that particular day. So as long as that's exempt, we're good. Thank you.
That, I, the, as that ordinance is currently constituted, my opinion would be that anything under a permitted excise, you know, permit for, because, I mean, you have to provide security plans and things like that.
Right, no, I know that.
For ex, I mean, so they have that regulatory authority over the admission and so forth. So yes, those are outside the scope of this ordinance. What this is meant to do is deal with buildings that are not be used in any sort of commercial endeavor right now.
Except for that particular day.
But for this special event that's being held by an outfit that has nothing to do with this community, is not affiliated with any university, you know, organization, or promoting another exempt not-for-profit purpose.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Any other council discussion? Councilman Dink?
Let her go first, because I'm looking for someone.
Councilwoman Henley?
What's a special event? What's the definition? The dance, is it the dance park?
I would say a special event you know, someplace where music is performed or reproduced by way of electronic or mechanical device inside a building or premises in the city. Yes, where, I mean, I don't think, I think it's more built around the idea of music, whether that be live or reproduced, not in furtherance of any exempt activity, is how I would define it.
I think it's the manual church, bright trot, serving beer and music in October. Will they have to get a special event?
A church?
Yeah, because it's open to the public.
Yeah, no. That would be a, they are recognized not-for-profit. Anything that they do that is in furtherance of their not-for-profit, they can open to the public. They may have to, you know, get, if they're selling beer, they will have to, you know, have excise involved in that aspect of it. But they would be exempt under the special event permit.
And Mike, I got it, sorry. I got to point you to Section 4-311(a) as long as the special event is not open to the general public. The exemption is for religious organizations, as long as it's not open to the general public. That's the definition in the ordinance. So my reading of it is, they would have to get a special permit.
I yield. What else, Councilwoman Henley?
I see your point, Amanda. And, you know, the language there is meant to include, yeah, events that are promoted to the general public. It is meant to be inclusive of that.
And, Mike, just the example, you still would have had to have a special event permit, even if we didn't amend this, just based off the previous language. So even the language that we've added is not tied to that style event, because you would still be required to have one even before this is enacted.
So that church will have to get a special?
That church will have to get one, and then follow the steps, of course, connect with excise, as well as there's alcohol being sold. And then subsequently, be required for a one-day permit. Or if the, I mean, I doubt that a church and a bar is in the same building. But if that were the case, and they would use that, alcohol permit.
But then they'd also be, since it's in October, they'd also be subject to the higher fee, as well as the higher liability insurance. Why, I guess the liability insurance?
Is set.
Is across the board. So they'd just be subject to the $200 more event fee, because it's in the month of October.
That's correct. And, I mean, in reading, you know, what I, the language that, in 4-3-11, 4-311, you know, and the special event is controlled exclusively by the Fraternal Educational Governmental Charitable, is limited to members and invited guests. So, I mean, that's, in theory, people who, you know, promote it, whether that be, but I understand the concern there. And would have no reservation to a proposed amendment.
This is not just, may I, a couple things, because we're getting a little, and I thank you for bringing that up, because it does open up the door here. And this is not just, this ordinance is not just pertaining to October, correct? The only thing that pertains to October is the time, correct?
And the fee. And the timeline and the fee.
Okay, so, so there, is there a fee other than, so a special event conducted in September would still have to pay a fee?
Yes, that fee is on.
Does chances for youth have, because of this, they're having on Friday, did they have to pay a fee?
Yes, they are already subject to a fee.
Okay, I want to clarify, okay. So basically, then, any not-for-profit that opens it to the public, now, if they don't charge admission, does that still? Is it still?
For a special event, this is not point, but letter B, I said that earlier, point B. For a special event which is not advertised to the general public in any manner, not open to the general public, and for which there is no admission fee or cover charge, that would be in the exempt status. If it were to fail that clause, then it would be in the not exempt status.
Okay, so if it's open to the general public, it doesn't make any difference whether you're charging a fee or not. It's, you're subject to the fee. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, I yield.
Councilman Dinkle?
Okay, you, this was not my original topic, but we've unraveled this a little bit. So theoretically, under that assumption, a nonprofit could have a public event, not charge admissions fee, and still have to do this, and still have to have a fee. Because it's, under that clause, it's not advertised to the general public and no admission fee, not or, it's and. So I could operate a nonprofit, say I'm going to do this community event. There's no public, I still have to pay this fee, under that language, I would assume. My, just reading this, my suggestion would be, we strike the not open to the general public, to the special event limited to members and invited guests. That way nonprofits, regardless of what they're doing, are in this gray area.
And, Councilman Dinkle, you can do that and amend it after this meeting. We are one month into this discussion. I have sent drafts of this and asked for feedback numerous times. And I have an incident on August 31st that is not an incident that any mayor wants to go through and have possible shots fired with underage individuals. So I would ask the council to pass this tonight, and if you would like to make amendments to it, to do amendments to it. But I'm at the point where it's like, I would like some sort of language to be done.
Well, here are the two points I want to make. First off, this is the latest draft I saw when I sat down tonight. I did not see any of the drafts prior to our last meeting. This is the first time I'm seeing it, so we're trying to make a judgment call here. Secondly, my original question is, I have a question of form with the ordinance. In Section 4-311, none of the changes are underlined as they're supposed to be. And I believe there's supposed to be language at the top that it says, where it says amending the insertion of the underlying text and deleting the stricken text. Because when I first looked at this, I missed the 15-member change, because it's not properly underlined. So that, in this ordinance, isn't shown as a change from the original. So I'm not sure that, I'm new, so I don't know.
Councilman Dinkle, I'll take responsibility for that. the fact of the matter, from my perspective at least, is there was a lot of conversation going on around a few different aspects of the agreement. I tried, and I thought, sent out to the whole council, along with the flyer that the THPD received, you know, the most up-to-date version that Brandon and I had discussed. And so that's what I forwarded to Michelle, and she worked off of to produce what is in front of you tonight.
Right, and the, don't get me wrong, I'm completely in support of the spirit of this ordinance. And I understand the time sensitivity to the issues that we're trying to address. I've talked about it with the police department, I get it. I just want to make sure, if we're voting on what's in front of us as an amendment, that it's in proper form, that we don't have to come back and change something in the future. And I'm open, if the rest of the council is, to moving forward this if we commit to coming back to that language about nonprofits, or we can offer an amendment on the table here today, I guess.
And so just to confirm, you did not receive an email sent August 23rd at 2:40 p.m.?
I did forward it, yes.
I received that, but there have been changes made since then, correct?
No. No, that was a PDF version of this, this is the word version.
Exact same version.
Which, of course, does have the underlying issue.
We did get two versions. We got a version a couple days ago that was the original. And so I saw the revision, I was like, wait a minute, do we go back? To the original? Because I saw both of them, and so I was confused about which one was coming tonight. So we got here tonight, this is the one that I saw in the email. And then, you know, I asked, I sent Michelle a note and asked her to send me a hard copy of, there was a paper copy last time of this version. She sent that to me. But the newest version that we got in our email a couple days ago was the original version. Am I, was it just me?
Just to clarify, in the August meeting, there had been a proposed amendment, but no action was ever taken. Now, this is another proposed amendment, and I think there was a little confusion on the differences.
That would be correct. And I think there had been some versions around that only showed the revisions and not the full ordinance, you know, in its whole, where the exemptions were listed. And I know that was a big topic of discussion at the first, in time this was introduced.
Councilman Chalos?
I'm going to lay my cards on the table here, too. I understand the concerns of the council. But also, the beauty about these things is that they're living, breathing documents. And I think the mayor is correct in the sense that we need to give them something to work with, right, until we can get this, either amend it on the floor now and just pass it, or bring it back, right? Because I think the timeframe here to give the police the tools to protect the community and the mayor, I think, are essential. So, and that's the beauty from my experience from last time. These are all living, breathing documents. They can be changed at any moment, if we choose to bring them back. I yield, I'm sorry.
Councilman Nation?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week. We've got at least two issues, which would be pretty simple to address. One is putting it in the proper format. The other is the proposed striking of a little bit of language. In my experience, amending legislation on the floor is not really what we want to do, if we can avoid it. Since we have a meeting scheduled for next week, which there are already agenda items for, and we're all going to be here, I would recommend that we focus on what those issues are, and then putting together a proper amendment, or directing someone, Michael, to put together a proper amendment, put it before us for next week's meeting. It's just my recommendation, I yield.
Councilwoman Thompson?
As I stated the last time, this was before us in its original form. And I greatly appreciate the changes that have been made and your willingness to meet with ISU and make the changes that were requested. I am still going to be a no, even if we take out the general public and all that. The issue that we have with these parties, I don't think the changes in this ordinance are going to impact that at all. And in fact, increasing the fee during that month of October is going to dissuade people from registering their events and getting the special event permit, which actually puts THPD in a worse position, because then they don't have a heads-up of where these parties are, and who's throwing them, the contact person, you know, unless they're getting a call, I guess, from Indianapolis Police Department. So I think by making it more expensive and more difficult to get a special event permit, it's going to discourage people from doing what we want them to do, which is to register their event. So I don't think it meets the goal. So I'm going to be a no regardless of the changes. But I just want to express my gratitude for making the changes that you did.
And then just genuine question, but above Section 4-315 transfer of permit, so above that, number seven, you don't believe that that will help us stop bad actors from out of towns or from other districts who have committed an offense in another jurisdiction with similar circumstances? Because that clause would literally allow us to have stopped if that event had happened on the 31st.
If that was the only, if that was the only change to the ordinance, I probably would support that.
Oh, I yield. Councilwoman Lauterma? Did you still have a comment?
Well, you know, I brought forward this ordinance. Officer Thompson's out there. But when he asked me about this, and I've worked with the police department, who, you know, had to deal with these things several times back in July when we brought it. And I understand that we've had some amendments to it. I'm okay with those, we've come through. Quite frankly, I was, I missed the last meeting, I was on vacation. I had asked for it to be, I gave my support for it then. Again, we're back to the table, and we're questioning it again. I understand amending on the floor. I understand everyone's concerns. Councilman Chalos makes a good point. I guess, at this point, I would like to see this passed and done. If we can get the changes by next week, I'd like to see those in front of us. If nothing else, we move forward. We vote on this ordinance, whether you're going to support it or you're not going to support it. And we move forward so that the department can start preparing. We are close to coming up on the time period that this usually happens. I understand, Councilmember Thompson, I understand what you're saying. I guess, in the past, we've probably had some not buy the permit anyway. I guess, in the past, we've probably had some not buy the permit anyway. But at least this gives us something. If they choose to follow the law and the rule and come in and get the permits, the departments can be prepared. I, I don't know, at some point, we've got to start trying to protect the citizens of our community, and I'm just ready to, to move forward with this. So if we can get this done by next week, that's my suggestion. If anyone wants to make their amendments, but let's, let's get them in, let's get it done. Either we vote it up or we vote it down. I yield.
I, I have no qualms presenting a new clean version by next week's meeting, that, that's no issue. I, you know, echo Brandon's sentiments that, you know, the, the issues here are, are pressing and, and need addressed, but if that's the council's wish, we'll have a, yeah, version out at the beginning of next week.
Any other council discussion?
I have a question, I'm new at this. How do people know, like a promoter comes, I mean, if somebody comes to throw a party, how do they know this exists? How do we market that? We have to do this?
Good question.
I, I just, I just want to know. And the second thing is, I know our police department is already on high alert in this season. They got, they got ears and nose to the ground. They, nothing catches them by surprise. It does not, they follow a party. It just, they know. I, I think they're very prepared. Some, they do the best they can to stop problems, they have always done the best they could to stop problems. I don't know that this piece of paper, it's almost like a restraining order, somebody wants to beat somebody up, they're going to beat them up.
I mean, these are not just all on the city website, but members have known for years that this is the legal requirement to do an event in the city of Terre Haute. And are out-of-town promoters going to try to do this Instagram thing, which they just tried to do August 31st in the county, not the city? Yeah, and that's why we have law enforcement, because their ears, eyes, you name it, are to the ground. And if, if you think that any ordinance is just a, a piece of paper or a restraining order, then I would ask, what is the, the point of even, even trying then, if that's the true thought? I mean, we've got to update city ordinances to help the people of Terre Haute. And I think that's been very clear based off public comment today, that some of our city ordinances are not good.
Mayor, I, I agree with you. A lot of our ordinances do need to be updated, and this, this is one that needs to be updated. I don't reject that. I'm just saying, the what-ifs and what's happened in the past, I was here, I was in the room with this past years ago, so I understand it. I didn't like it then, I'm not crazy about it now. But I think that, you know, we, we don't want Wild, Wild West in Terre Haute either.
Yeah, the, the thing that I would say, you know, being around at the inception of this as well, this was something that came from other bigger communities that saw this in their jurisdictions and told smaller jurisdictions, hey, you're going to start seeing this problem, you need to get in front of it. And it's not, you know, it was not born out of a desire to adopt an ordinance, it was born out of a necessity to try and get ahead of what can be very tough situations for, you know, communities. And, you know, anytime there's a shooting in a crowded room, that is traumatic for a number of reasons and, and can, you know, end in a variety of bad ways, and so trying to ensure that the people that you have promoting events here are doing it responsibly was just the inception of this ordinance, in my opinion.
I, I despise gun violence. We saw it pop off yesterday in Georgia. We don't want to see that in our city. I, I'm kind of with Mr. Hyde, I'd put up a meter, something like we got out here, we don't, nobody's coming in here with a gun. You know, why, why won't we require folks to walk through a metal detector coming to a party? We hire security, there is a security plan, pardon, that security plan might ought to be a metal detector at the door. That's off-topic, and I'm sorry, but that's, that's way off-topic, but if we want to keep people safe, we really want to keep people safe. There are so many ways we can do it, other ways we can do it. I yield.
Thank you. Councilman Azar?
I don't want to belabor the point here. I'm, I'm in support of this, number one, as far as, I, I do think it needs to be changed and whatever amendment needs to be done. But just to answer your question, Candace, is that in order for anyone to have a function that has alcohol, they first have to contact the Indiana State Excise Police. If it's open to the public, the form that they fill out requires them to let the city or county sheriff or whatever know that that function is being held. So that technically, the, like, if I cater a party and I have a permit, and that party's open to the public, okay? And they're serving alcohol, at that point in time, I will either email or whatever the city police department and say, this function is happening at such and such a place, such and such a time. That's how they know, basically. Now, let's be honest, anybody that's going to break the law and want to break the law, they're going to do it no matter what you've got on his paper. They're going to do it, and that, you can't stop everything, but we can discourage it. And if this will help discourage it, you know, I'm, I'm all for it, but I, I kind of agree that with Councilperson Dinkle, that we need to probably get it in writing, have it ready in the proper form, so that you don't have to come back again and redo all this. Unfortunately, I won't be here next week, so I will just say I am in support of it after you do the amendment, so.
I'll go in here.
Anyone else? Councilman Dinkle?
Yeah, again, I don't want to belabor this, I just want to make clear, I'm in support of this, because I think the important thing about this is, I respect everybody's comments here. We know there are going to be people that don't follow the policy. The people that want to break the law will break the law. But what this does is gives the police department and the city a mechanism, if they're tipped off about a party that hasn't followed this, they can shut it down before it happens. And I think that's kind of the point we're missing here, is that without this, it's, it's a free-for-all. We can at least hold them to some account if somebody is not, you know, following this rule. It's an easy, you didn't get your permit, shut it down. I mean, that's, that's the end of the discussion, so I think that's important. My only concern is, as this discussion evolved, is if we have a church that's having an event in their parking lot or, or something, I just have a problem charging a nonprofit organization, a religious organization, this fee when they're just trying to, you know, raise funds for their own organization. So if we can strike that section of four dash three eleven, other than that, I'm in support of this, and I do think, I, I appreciate everybody's comments that it is important that we give police the mechanism to, to protect themselves. I yield.
Anyone else? I, I just have one question, and maybe it's a process question, Brandon, or someone who's in the know. Under four dash three dash fourteen, the denial grounds, section seven, where it says applicant has committed a violation of this article and so forth, how do we know that? How do we determine that? Do we do a background check on everybody who files for a permit?
Yes.
On every person who files for a special event permit, we do a background check?
Well, I mean, we do a check in our system to see if they have ever applied for a special event permit before.
Okay.
So a background check, that might have been misstated.
Okay.
Councilwoman President.
So I'm, I'm just saying, the applicant, so they'd be in violation, they wouldn't be allowed to apply for a permit if they committed a violation of this article in a previous event, committed an offense in another jurisdiction. So I, I'm just kind of questioning, how are we going to enforce that? I mean, if we've got people coming from another, we're concerned with the promoters that are coming from another city, here, how, how are we going to enforce that?
Yeah, just to, again, reiterate, so when another agency's police department calls about, we'll call them individual alpha, having an issue with a similar statute in their community that led to three shootings, that would fall under this statute of committed another offense in another jurisdiction. And so these agencies do crosstalk. Again, we also have our state agencies. That exact scenario is a great example of how we could do that, with agencies crosstalking and working with one another, which the Terre Haute Police Department actually does a fine job of.
I, I'm not going to debate that with you or anyone else, Mayor. I'm just, I was just kind of curious as to how we're, you know, short of that kind of communication between departments, we may have that communication with Indianapolis. I mean, there's a lot of small communities that are having issues, that don't even have ordinances like these that they need to follow, and I was just curious how we're going to enforce that. So I, I get it, I love the communication between departments. Anyway, I was just curious. Thank you, I'll yield. Anyone else? Well, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to...
Do something.
Do something. Pass? Table? A man?
I moved, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I moved to table this until the next meet, until the September 12th meeting, if that, again, I'm not going to be here, so.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to table General Ordinance 12, 2024, to the, what is it?
September 12th.
September 12th meeting, made by Councilwoman Azar, seconded by Councilman Dinkle. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Ordinance 12, 2024 is tabled to the September 12th meeting. Next. Michelle, tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Items on first reading?
Appropriation 34, 2024, $186,315.57 from EMS Fund Number 02700027, Training Academy, THFD Number 0511000000319, I'm sorry, 391220. As a reminder, you must vote to take action.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Council President Boland and the rest of the council. I'm Diana Luther, Deputy Chief of EMS Operations, and this evening we are asking for this appropriation. It's actually written already into our EMS non-reverting fund, where five percent of our proceeds from our billing goes to our fire training academy.
Is that it? All right.
That's quick.
Yeah, expecting more. At this time, we'll open for public comment on appropriation 34, 2024.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Last time I forgot to say something, dang it, I'll leave it alone. On this here, I'm 100% for it. All the training the fire department gets saves lives. All the training that the police department gets saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? Close public comments and open council discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman, what's your name? Nation?
If there's no discussion, I move that we take action on appropriation number 34, 2024.
Second. Who's second at that?
That was right.
Just give him half an inch.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Nation to take action on appropriation 34, 2024, seconded by Councilwoman Lautermer. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can now take action on appropriation 34, 2024.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Nation.
I move for approval of appropriation 34, 2024.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to approve appropriation 34, 2024, made by Councilwoman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Lautermer. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation 34, 2024 is...
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Scott, for saving lives.
I was thinking for following the code, because that is in code. Michelle, special ordinances?
Special Ordinance 18, 2024, rezoning a property located at 2333 South Fruit Ridge Avenue. Area planning gave you favorable with conditions of recommendation, you must vote to take action.
Petitioner, it's been a while.
It has been a while. Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley, I'm with the Law Firm of Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowry, and tonight I'm here on behalf of M&amp;B Solutions LLC. As Michelle stated, not only did the area plan give it a favorable recommendation last night, the area plan staff gave it a favorable recommendation to the area plan mission. There was no one last night speaking opposition to the rezoning of the property at 2333 South Fruit Ridge. As anybody that's lived in Terre Haute knows, and if you've ever gone down Fruit Ridge, that building has been a commercial business since before I was born. Well, pretty close, I think, I remember the first few years. For whatever reason, I think I know the reasons, because I think we've rezoned this a few times over the years, it's always been R1 plan development on the theory that if it stops becoming a commercial business, it'll go back to residence. Well, the reality is, this is a commercial building, and it's always been used for commercial purposes. As a result, I'm here tonight to rezonate from R1 plan development to a C6. We land on C6 with the advice of Marcus Maurer, that was his recommendation, and the purpose of this is, the petitioner owns a laundry business, so he'll come to your house, pick up a bag of laundry, take it to his place, clean it, bring it back to your house. He does it for a bunch of college kids, he does it for a bunch of private residences, and he's trying to grow it into something, and he's here tonight asking this to be rezoned to a, to a C6, to further those objectives. I will say, last night, there was a question by one of the commissioners regarding the traffic. As you may recall, I was here a few months ago rezoning the property across the street for Munshner's Development, and there were some questions about traffic. As you also may recall, the traffic study that was done and the numbers presented by the engineering department said it's like a, don't hold me to the exact number, but like a point three second, I mean, a minimal delay, a potential delay with this development. And we don't anticipate any additional further burdensome with the rezoning of this due to the fact that customers aren't coming to Fruit Ridge and Holman, they go out, pick up and bring them back. Now, there is, part of this request is, there's a, there is some space for potential of another commercial entity. That is just potential, there's nothing planned, there was some early discussion, maybe a beauty salon, but at this point, there is no plans for that other commercial, it is simply now for the laundry service. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on special ordinance 18, 2024?
From what they said and what I heard, I have no problem with that, nor should anybody else. Let them have their business.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment?
Why vote?
Close public comments and open council discussion on special ordinance 18, 2024. Councilman Dinkle?
Richard, just to clarify, if we're looking at this map, we're only talking about this parcel here, not this one over here, right? I applaud you and appreciate you taking that. Just the... Just this one, not this? Okay. I just want to clarify. I yield.
Anyone else in council?
Madam President, there's no further questions. I move we take action on special ordinance 18, 2024.
Second. A motion on the floor to take action on special ordinance 18, 2024, made by Councilwoman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Chalos. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now take action on special ordinance 18, 2024. Councilman Azar?
I made a motion to approve special ordinance... I make a motion to approve Special Ordinance 18, 2024.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to approve Special Ordinance 18, 2024, made by Councilwoman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Thompson. All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Special Ordinance 18, 2024 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any business cars? I love the laundry.
I was going to say, can you get a free thing? Well, I felt like it would have been, maybe a little unethical if I had those out prior to the vote, but we can talk afterwards. Thank you very much.
Michelle, Special Ordinance 33, 2024?
Sorry. Special Ordinance 33, 2024, rezoning a property located at 1503 Ohio Street and 218 South 15th Street. Area planning gave you favorable with conditions of recommendation. You must vote to take action.
Petitioner.
I'm James Fox, and I'm here to enlist your aid to correct a zoning error that has been in existence for 32 years. My office that I've been in for over 26 years at this point, I discovered, much to my chagrin, is zoned R3, and it's been in C2 use for 32 years, and I wanted to get that corrected. This all got started, the discovery of this, was when I wanted to have a adjacent piece of property zoned C2, so I could have a parking lot installed. And when I was talking to the folks in area planning, I discovered that it was zoned R3, much to my chagrin. And so I am wanting to get that corrected, so that we will be in compliance finally. Do you have any questions of me?
Not yet. Thank you. Anyone from the comment, from the public wish to comment on Special Ordinance 33, 2024?
This one's even more simple than the last one.
Thank you.
He's already been there, almost, well, he's been there for 20 years going on.
I think he said 35. Thank you. Okay, I'll close public comments, open council discussion. Anyone from the council?
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle?
There's no further discussion. I move that we take action on Special Ordinance 33, 2024.
Second.
All right.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to take action on Special Ordinance 33, 2024, made by Councilwoman Dinkle, seconded by Councilwoman Hinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can now take action on Special Ordinance 33, 2024.
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle.
I move for approval of Special Ordinance 33, 2024.
Second. Motion on the floor to approve Special Ordinance 33, 2024, made by Councilwoman Dinkle, seconded by Councilwoman DeBon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Special Ordinance 33, 2024 is approved. You are now in compliance.
Almost.
Resolution 21, 2024, transfer of $21,000 from the mayor's budget to the Board of Public Works budget.
Petitioner. See what I did there? I beat you to it. Good evening, Councilwoman Boland and members of the Terre Haute City Council. So what you have before you today is a transfer of benefits, right? Your life insurance, your health insurance, and even a little bit of a phone stipend over to the Board of Public Works from the mayor's office. And here's why. Our Director of Board of Public Works and Safety, what I'm doing is transferring money from a second assistant, which we do not have and have not had for months within the mayor's office, over to the Board of Public Works and Safety to cover that director. You also see a cell phone stipend moved over there. I am splitting the current mayor's stipend three ways to cover multiple employees, to try to stretch our dollars as far as possible. So that is part of that administrative move over there. So that way, we have our executive director, and that is Jesse Tohill, and, you know, the amount of work done in just nine months, whether it's some constituent services work, I'm sure you've seen a lot of road work, curb work, painting, consolidation of equipment, sale of surplus equipment, which goes back into the budget to provide for new equipment. I can do a lot without him, and he's been a great valuable team member. So this is just transferring the benefits over, so that way we can appropriately get them all paid for the year.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on Resolution 21, 2024? Public comments are closed.
I didn't understand where you said something.
Madam President.
Open council discussion. Councilman Nation.
If there's no discussion, I move for approval of Resolution 21, 2024.
She has a question.
Sorry, second. I have the floor, we'll do that, and then we can call for discussion.
Second. Discussion. Sure, but we have to go first with it.
Mayor?
So, we, I just, we have to do this part first, and then, we have to do this part first, and then you can go back.
No, just spend motion at second, it can be discussed.
Okay, I'm sorry. I need to go to my.
I just have a question. When we did that position, moved it Board of Public Works, did we only transfer money for salary and not the benefits? Because I thought we did something in the beginning of the year.
Yes, but it was not...
We transferred for salary, but we didn't transfer for benefit.
It was just a salary direct, so...
And we didn't transfer for the benefit.
Yes, so we should have done that then, but catch up.
I just wanted to make sure. I thought we had transferred for the salary. Okay, I yield.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 22, 2024, made by Councilwoman Nation.
21.
21?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Resolution 21, 2024, made by Councilwoman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman... Councilwoman Hinton? All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 21, 2024 is approved. Resolution 22, 2024?
Resolution 22, 2024, transfer of $15,000 from the Controller's budget to the council's budget.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Jessica Thome, City Controller. I am requesting a transfer of budgeted funds from my service contractual line in my budget to your budget for legal services for the year of $15,000.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on Resolution 22, 2024? I'll close public comments, open council discussion.
Madam President, there's no discussion. I move to approve Resolution 22, 2024.
Second. We have a motion to approve Resolution 22, 2024, made by Councilwoman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Chalos. All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 22, 2024 is approved.
It's a mouth.
I just want to announce what I had to add.
Michelle has an announcement?
It is the budget meeting dates, so you received today notification for the 1 September 10th. I do apologize, there's a typo on this form, it is 5:30, not 5:00 p.m. And there is a potential meeting scheduled for September 11th if needed, again at 5:30. The public hearing is September 12th at 5:30, which is, of course, for public comment only on the budget, and the voting meeting will be October 10th during the regular meeting, and I will post this information on the website.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Councilwoman Nation?
So, to reiterate, all three of them are supposed to be at 5:30, the first three, and then the last ones at 6:00?
That is correct, and I will be posting this on the website and emailing everybody as reminders, yes.
Thanks, I yield.
Sorry about that.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Councilwoman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Nation. All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.